Meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen for tonight, Tuesday, June 17th. And we'll begin with our community announcements and updates.
And the truth is, I left my list behind. I have to try to remember what was going on.
Behind in the conference room or behind?
Unfortunately, at home, behind. And usually, I email them to myself, but I forgot to tonight. What's coming up, for sure, is the opening, the first day of the farmer's market on Thursday, starting at 1:30 in the afternoon and running until sunset. And the other two items that I had remembered that are coming up are this weekend, sort of it's a Frederick Law Olmsted weekend. There's a documentary that will air on WGBH PBS Friday night at 9:00 PM, which I gather has members whose faces we will recognize, who are Brookline residents, who are part of the documentary on Frederick Law Olmsted's life. And then on Saturday evening, there will be a walking tour that leaves from the Frederick Law Olmsted site at 6:00 PM. And it's going to go in the neighborhood that was influenced by him and his landscape in practice. For anybody who doesn't know who Frederick Olmsted is, he was probably the founder of landscape architecture as a profession and a major influence behind the creation of some of the iconic parks, public parks that we have, including the Emerald Necklace and major parks throughout the country.
Including the town of Pinehurst, North Carolina, where I was the last five years.
As matter of fact. How about that? His firm certainly was known throughout the country. And a technical point, the 21st is the summer solstice, the longest day of the year and presumably the first day of summer, which we may be having today, for all I can tell.
We don't have any pagan rituals planned for this?
Don't think so. No, no. And just sort of a footnote, and it may be something we can mention later because of our calendar, the Billy Ward Playground on Aspen Wall Avenue was opened over the weekend after having been closed down for many months and well-attended. I happened to be there, and I would say everybody was very enthusiastic about it.
Great. Well, I'll add that I and you, Selectmen DeWitt and Selectmen Daly were at the retirement party for retiring Chief Librarian Chuck Flaherty. And there was a lot of well-deserved praise for Chuck and a lot of nice going parting gifts as well. And we wish Chuck the very best from here on in and thank him for his years of innovation and dedication and benevolent leadership.
And I would say he's left a wonderful legacy of renovated library buildings and some strong institutional support. And I think there's actually a new fund that was established with the Library Foundation and other donors, I think the Friends of the Public Library, that's going to be used for program development and other projects that I'm sure will continue Chuck's influence and legacy, even after his 21 years are up.
Great. Very good. I think you did a great job from memory.
Thank goodness. It hasn't all lost.
Mr. Selectmen, has anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
No.
Good. We can move right along to our miscellaneous calendar. And we will start with our minutes from our meeting of June 10th, 2014. I have a couple of very minor comments. I'm going to pass those down to Kate. Anybody else?
No. I didn't have anything.
In that case, I move that we approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting as revised. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And just for the record, item B on our agenda has been postponed. I don't think there's anyone here who is planning to speak on that, so. And we can move on to item C, which is the question of approving and executing a contract with SMMK and the amount of $100,000 for architectural and educational planning services in connection with Brookline High School. I see Mr. Rowe is here. And I see Ms. Chalubski is here, too. And Peter, do you want to come talk to us about this?
Thank you. Yes, we do have the request for the further study of Brookline High School. This is consistent with the action taken by the school committee last fall to direct the superintendent and the headmaster to do a program review to determine first, in broad strokes, what Brookline High School should look like or might look like with 2,500 students in the years coming. And to make sure that there's further study of really the educational needs, understanding, and if you will, defining the growth of the programs that are needed to match them with really 21st century skills, so that we can, if we do work on the facility, and we think we may need to, understand how to match facility needs with the program needs. So this is really getting the program study off the ground. And so the process will move forward, beginning actually next Tuesday. Major step would be what's called a visioning day, where I know about 25 or so staff of the school department, along with representatives of other boards and commissions and departments of the town, will be getting together for what's called a visioning session by the architect. But the plan is to get that off the ground, get a lot of community input, and that's a first step this spring. There'll not be a lot of work over the summer, but then get back together in the fall, do again another sort of community-wide input process after getting, again, clarification, looking at what comes out of next week's work, leading up to a report by December. The theory being that if we were to move forward with a statement of interest to the state for work on the high school in what we expect to be their deadline a year from next April, that it would be based on ideas that arise from this. That's one possibility. We'll really see where this goes.
How does this differ from the study that was done about a year ago?
Well, the work that was done by the prior architect, HMFH, was a lot of, if you will, bricks and mortar, looking at the facility and posing to us ideas that said, well, you could take this part of a building and make modifications, or you could take the tapestry gym and turn it into classrooms. You know, it was a lot of, if you will, design elements of how you might create space. This is more the program review that says, what do we believe our students are going to need? How do we see educational issues moving forward? So it's really getting a handle on programmatically, where we would imagine education going for high school students in Brookline over the next 20 years. You know, changes will happen, and we want to make sure there's a facility that we've made those changes that will match what we think will happen.
Okay. How did the selection process for this go?
It was a 30B procurement, which meant it was advertised, requests for proposals were issued. And it was done in a request for proposal, so that the qualifications came in separately from the price. So that there was primarily a group of school committee members and school committee staff who reviewed the submission, qualified it for highly advantageous or advantageous, and then looked at the price package and negotiated with the building department, actually, who has more experience with architectural firms, the scope.
I'm curious, did HMFH bid on this?
They did not.
They did not? Okay. Selectmen DeWitt.
Just a quickie follow-up, by the way, Mr. Rowe. You are actually crossing over into summer next week, so it's not spring anymore.
That's right.
But I'm curious if you can give us an update, and I realize this is not part of this particular contract, on how you see the rolling enrollment in the K-8s hitting the high school and sort of what the timeframe there is. In other words, I know with B-Space, we had looked at projections and absorption and sort of how many years of enrollment increases could be accommodated, and then there's going to be a crunch. So can you sort of give us an overview?
Sure. I mean, in round numbers, we're this year really at the trough, if you will. We're just about 1,800 students. I think it's 1,802 this year. And we've not really been much below 1,700, low 17s, over the last few years. As we move forward now for the next few years, we're going to be growing approximately 100 students a year. Now, it's going to vary. Some years it may be 75, there might be a year when it's actually 100 and, you know, a quarter. But if you just thought of it as a graph of each year, we're going to grow about 100 students, that really, I think, frames the problem, which is while we can accommodate that growth for a couple of years, we'll beginning to be squeezed. And that's some of the work we're looking at this year, we're actually, or for the beginning of next school year, we're actually moving a couple of our preschool classrooms out that we had located there. You know, so we'll be really looking at making internal changes in the building where we may have had the luxury to locate a particular activity in a space perhaps dedicated. We'll have to give that up. So in the short term, meaning each year as we move forward, we'll have to make some of those decisions. And then the competing issue is that we did have a belief that three years from now, we might be able to utilize the old Lincoln School in some capacity for some of that pressure. We don't know that today, given some of the schedule of some of the issues that will be happening with, for instance, a devotion school.
Right.
Project. So many of the issues in terms of capacity, I think, will be competing with each other and complicating some of our decisions. But that's the context in which we'll be doing this planning, yes.
And just a matter of disclosure, I'm sure Mr. Rowe knows this, but I think members of the board should. The Chair of the Planning Board, Mark Zerillo, is the landscape director for this particular architectural firm.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a conflict. It's just a disclosure.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm right. Yeah, I didn't say there was a conflict. It's just a disclosure.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none. Helen, do you want to add anything?
Hi, I'm Helen Charlofsky of Brookline School Committee. And just one little piece that you should all be aware is that the high school, since last September, October, has been doing a review by themselves of their program and looking at different school systems, different ideas and terms of programs. So it's called their 2020, what do they call it? 2020?
Brookline High 2020.
Brookline High 2020. So this architectural firm will be coming in at a good time when they've already explored many things, and there'll be a real good synergy there to work and get to the right program, and a program that has flexibility. I mean, I think that'll be a critical piece in all of this, because things change. And, you know, we want to make sure that whatever we build doesn't keep us in, if we do have to build, doesn't keep us boxed in, so to speak.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there are further questions, I'm going to move that we approve and execute a contract with Sims, Miani, and McKee in the amount of $100,000 for architectural educational planning services in connection with further study of Brookline High School. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Moving on to item D on our agenda, we have the question of approving an internal transfer within the Selectmen's appropriation for town meeting-related staff support. Mr. Selectmen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll handle that. My staff is down with the override study committee this evening. So there is really two reasons for this. The first one was that we believe that the electronic voting system, which works very well at town meeting, really does need IT staff to be there and to provide the kind of support that's required. So we didn't have that budgeted. And then the ad for the actual, you know, town meeting warrant was really expensive because the warrant was so expansive this year. I think Article 10, Brookline Place and others.
Sure, blame me.
Just the publishing cost. So with that, we have identified a source and a request an internal transfer to fund those expenses.
Can I just ask? I mean, we've had staff helping with the voting in the past. Who are they and where have they been coming from?
They're, good question. They're IT staff. I think we probably did this last year, as well, the same kind of transfer. And now we're catch, we'll catch up for fiscal '15 and the budget.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? Good.
I just want to say that we, several of us attended the Democratic State Convention on Saturday, which was highly disorganized, and a number of people in the Brookline delegation were suggesting that Brookline's electronic voting might be a model for that.
There'd be quite a few of those little beepers that would do that, wouldn't there? I move that we approve the following transfer within the Selectmen's appropriation for town meeting, $3,000 from the property insurance account to the overtime account. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have three temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, all in connection with the auto museum at 15 Newton Street, a corporate summer outing on July 17th, a corporate tented summer outing on July 23rd, 5:30 PM, an outdoor tented wedding on July 26th at 4:00 PM. And I move that we approve those temporary licenses. Unless there's question or comment, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That concludes our miscellaneous calendar, agenda, and we'll move now to the formal calendar. And the first matter for consideration is, oops.
We're running ahead.
Interviews. So Rob's here. Great. First one is.
Oh, will you? Rescued.
I didn't see you come in, Rob. First is an interview for the Martin Luther King Planning Committee, and Rob Davis is here. Rob, will you come forward and chat with us for a moment? Thank you for putting your name in for this. Rob's been working with the, on MLK planning for many years now, but why don't you tell us a little bit about what your vision is for the committee and for future celebrations?
Okay. Yes, around, three years ago, three and a half years ago, when we did not have a Martin Luther King celebration for several years, after having it for many, a few of us got together with Selectman Jesse Mermel and said, this can't be. We have to do something. And we started what became an ad hoc committee. And it was just a few people, but I think it made a difference. We had, we put on an event, and as small as it was, it shows that Brookline does think the message of Martin Luther King needs to be reinforced. I'll tell you a little something that might sound like a little bit of a joke, politically incorrect joke, but I, my mother was Sicilian. And Sicilians, when they came to this country, were, they experienced a lot of intolerance, amongst Italians even, yet alone amongst.
Amongst Italians in Italy even.
That's correct. And but, you know, with the previous immigrants and so forth. And that kind of intolerance, you know, exists to this day, whether it's racial or not. And anyway, but my bit of joke was, my mother's maiden name was Negro. So I'm half Negro.
Oh.
And that was, that's added a little bit of unpleasantness to her life, because she needed to, you know, defend her skin color, because she was, you know, from Southern Italy, her looks, because she looked different. And she had a name. And, you know, of course, I'm not African-American, but it just goes to show that these things weave themselves together. And although Dr. King's message said that the arc of justice, you know, bends towards justice, it does it at a very low angle. And I think we need to keep that message going. And that's, that's what I hope we can provide this town, because, you know, as prosperous and as forward-thinking as we are, we can't, we need to do what we can.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
I have a comment and a question, I guess, because what I've seen in not just his application comments, but others, a real interest in expanding the mission beyond one event per year. And I know that you are also part of the Roland Hayes Committee, and I'm kind of wondering if there's any way that there could be music associated with part of this.
With the Roland Hayes or the Martin Luther?
Well, maybe, you know, some co-event.
It's, that's certainly possible. Roland Hayes Committee, we, I was active with that several years ago, and we started getting something together because it was going to be his 100th birthday.
Right.
But nothing really came together. There was a group, not a Brookline group, but a more, a wider regional group, that did put on a wonderful musical performance, and we lost that. But those, that, those connections are still there. And so that's the purpose of this recent committee, to pull these things together. And with Lloyd Gellino, you know, being on both committees like me, I think we can integrate these things if appropriate. It'd be wonderful to do something at the Martin Luther King Celebration.
Right.
Selectmen Daly.
Yeah, that was Arthur Conquest, who used to.
Yes.
Organize the Roland Hayes celebration a number of years ago.
He was part of it, yes.
And he was kind of the driving force behind it, I think. And I know Rita McNally was involved, too, but he might be able to provide you with some information.
We would love to work with Arthur, because he has a lot to offer.
I just wanted to say that I'm very happy you guys have been including some of the schoolchildren in Martin Luther King Day, the ceremonies, because I think it serves to educate the kids a little bit about.
Yeah, of course.
What this day means and why it's important. And, you know, when the kids come, then their parents come to watch them, and you get, you get a whole slice of the community there.
We've tried, and, you know, Ken Goldstein knows this, that we've tried to bring, you know, bring a sense of the past and honor the people who were actively involved, who were, you know, getting on in years, but also to educate, because most, most children, of course, know, have first, no firsthand experience. So we have to find ways to bring the message alive. And I think the way, you know, there's a lot of ways to do that, you know, with healthcare, with, with income disparity, you know, with, with things that go on in, you know, education. There's the war, you know, various wars. There's always something that you can glean from his messages that lives on.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Rob. Appreciate your, all the efforts that you put into this and other causes.
Yeah, the other thing is, I'm the guy with the pickup truck, so.
That helps a lot. That's important criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ann Kamenski here? I don't think she is.
We're supposed to start at 7:00, so whatever.
Yeah, I know. We're way ahead of her.
We're way ahead of our service rate.
First time for everything.
I don't see any of other candidates here, right? So I think we need to go on a short break here. We're way ahead of our schedule for, because we have 8:00 as well.
And because the liquor items are posted for 8:00, we can't take them up until 8:00 o'clock.
Right.
Mr. Selectmen?
We'll go on a short recess for the time being.
They're too efficient.
Thank you.
Right. Apologies.
I should have left something in my car. I'm going to run downstairs for a second.
Oh, good. Okay. I can think of a good one. Yes, it was a very good turnout. And gosh, the voice was there. And.
I sat down. And then. Youngsters, they love this. Doctors.
I see. Probably something you would never want to do today, never mind.
But anyway. Good turnout. And. I don't think anyone got to the chest that she said.
The job is. So what? Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's a tough time of year.
Yeah. I think there's more than I can give. She said.
Yeah, it's true. No, no. We're about.
And they said, oh, we've seen.
Yeah.
And she was a picture of her. And she was just.
Yeah. Stayed for us.
She's interesting.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting. I don't know. It's actually. It really is.
I can trace the person.
Yeah.
This is very, definitely.
Yeah.
I also think you still. You're in the public. It was a conversation.
I have to. I have to. I have to.
I'm sorry. I'm.
Yeah. I'm still. I'm. 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 I'm.[1774.83]
Right away. Well, now with the colors. It's intact. So how did you get it? Should be eyes of the. Excavation. You know, there was time to. All ones are blind. I have a good.
Twenty-five.
No, I'm talking about.
Those are.
Everything else. So it's been watching. They're making arguments. So. If I want to push it, I'll just move.
It's usually still Mr. Martin.
I thought I said. Maybe we get. Such. And. I know. I guess it's too much. Thank you. And then we could go to the other side of the horse. Well, I'm. We don't, so we give them a lot of time. I think we're. We lose those. Once they're first, they're supposed to be. For six months. It's even the issues. Maybe you're a little. I think I've got. The main. Things. See, maybe. Do you know what?
Take them out. Strip them.
Um. I think we have to talk. Put it back, start it with the back. You see, it's. It's a, it didn't. And so. So. I think. Just like that's what. We shut. And. It's. It's. I said, just. I'm very. There's the. Nothing coming. It's more than anyone. He's actually, yeah. I mean, she's. He's. The way you come up there. Thank you. I said, I told her. I think it's. And I was. So it starts getting now, these guys.
But it's.
Now you have. Do you need to sort of. I'm a mistake. I'm just. The other question, which is about. I'm also. I still. Just one more second. And said. That. My. Just. Right. How they do it to me.
It is great.
They're. They're. All together. I'm. So. So, yeah, great.
Nobody was here.
We were ahead of schedules.
Are you Anne?
Hmm?
Are you Anne?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, we'll be back in session in a few minutes. We were kind of ahead of.
Okay, great, thank you. I just had to take a minute to figure out where, where. Sorry about that.
So.
Find you my way. It's actually not.
So.
Well, we're generally at the start, more perks for this sport to run. You.
I only knew where it was because I had a truck. Dr. De La Smera. I'm. They, they are. They were talking about. Didn't they, for most families, so it's hard to stop. I mean, I think they are trying.
They use a certain.
I've seen.
And the lady from. Three or four. Mine's not that. So it can't be at all.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I think we had to. Don't. This is. Just. Some. Probably. Yeah. So it was.
I can. I can show you.
There are. I put that to.
So that's, that's what's going on.
That's bad. Karen.
How's it going?
Good. How are you?
Good. So happy that it's warm out.
Yeah, almost a little.
Too warm.
It's a little sticky. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just get long into. Yeah.
Who's next on us? I don't see.
Well, yeah.
I don't see the hand.
Yeah, dance in the back.
Okay.
Police station. Where is it? Two. Oh.
I forgot, but you use.
So you're in the house.
He does. Let's. This is.
So. I'm working. And all of this. I have them. Very. And. You live in New York, you know? Thank you. Thank you. I know. So. We sent. Just right over, did I? I thought you went the other side of it. Karen.
Oh.
Karen.
I'm gonna move by, I'm gonna ride the night, your police station. Directly.
Was the sun.
It's what? The sun. Absolutely.
Uh, building condition. Okay, I got you.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I know.
You know, you want to be. To all this. Okay. This. Definitely. Right. Or. If you should. This is. Okay. This is.
Yeah.
Very. Right. All this is. Now. I'm tired. All around this. I thought we were. You know, doing. But I used to. That's great. You know. We were. First. It's not the first. Right. I swear. Well, I, so I have had a. Was there a monitor? So we have. She's. About. Yeah. And she's telling me this. It's a different process. Uh. Oh, okay. So anyway, she's, um, she's also. We connected because we. Go to. Cause you. First. And it was. Here, so we. Have. The. She. And. Yeah, and so she. Met a person a number of times. She says, she says, I think it's like all the. And they're working. They're wanting. Said, so many issues, I want to work on, diversity came up, she.
Yes.
There is. Yeah, yes. So it's very. Really. Because. That's right. And then you saw. It's time to tie it in. Some of the schools celebrate on their own. Yeah.
Just. Listen.
It's done. Are you glad it's just. It's. Standing in front of you. So it was kind of. But I think it belongs to. Right. I didn't feel. Do you? I, I just know this. And really scratchy surface. That's kind of. And they have a very. Always. Every year. But I'm kind of trying to. They were just saying. You know. It's great. Dogs. So. They're. She. Did some kind of. And I bet them. Their daughters too.
That's, that's. I don't know. We have.
She's. So. If you. This one. This is the part she's doing. And he has. Relating him. So you should. And then. So you should. It's a long. That the, the guard. Can we. So. Unfortunately. Well, that's right. It's part of the whole. It's. They. Actually. That's. And they. Well, we're very happy about that. Very. Almost all of her has been kind of. Stayed. But. This is very. I want to real check. And right now. First she has to connect. And. Okay. So. I mean. And. And. It was even more challenging in my. It was very. I was leaving. That. So. And those. And those are. Very. Earth carbon. There is. And so. So. As far as. State. Rights. So he resold war. One whole ship had reconstruction. And how those. We can. I'm. The truth. So. So. Well, we never checked the. Sorry. Well, I probably. So I don't know what to say. So. So. Yeah. Because I just. I have. I mean. Structure. I mean, you know, the central. And. Back. And you brought. That's. So. I'm. I stay. Um. That is. Your. So. Oh, yeah. I think that's. I just. Oh, I think. I think. They found a place. Such a. Here by your. But this really. It was such a. If you don't want. So. Right. Same.
There is this. Why? The. Person.
Person. Yeah. So. And. I'm. Should. So. But. I'm dead. Just. Three of them. And that. You know. Another. I think it's. To be honest. Do you know that? There's a new consciousness. And. They're. That's. It's. That's just. He's. He came to my kitchen. I believe that. Yes. And. I'm. Which. My family. So. He was. Had. She wasn't. I haven't. Been contacted. Um. It's. But we just. Trying to. So. That was. And. Exciting. It worked for. Long time. And. I was saying. We have. Five. Garden. We can shake a bunch more. In useful. You can call me. Stay. Projects. I'm right down. I want to. I'm trying to do that.
It's my new, my new.
Two. Two. Yeah. All these. Yeah. Yeah. Um. She can't remember letters. To Jackie. Yeah. Exactly. The. Uh. And. She got it amazing.
Thank you.
They come from. State. Natural.
You're happy.
Right, right. Um, I think. And. They hope. We have. Their system. I'll still have to. Ask.
I.
I'm. Should be. Yeah. And then. I'm sure. They should look out. For us. With the. Staff. We have. Or. It was not. Any.
Getting up. Put. It's. The. I. Yeah.
Or they. Just. You're. Time to get.
Yeah. He's. He would be. They. It's always.
Yes. And. It's called. Like. I'm being. Being. Except.
Yeah.
And it ever shot. And. I'm. Coming. Yeah. That one's sweet. I'm having. That's.
I'm just like.
I'm great.
She had last.
Well, this is.
But. It's actually. Dream.
She. She. She never. She's. Having. Great. Do you want to. I'm. She. I'm so. She's. So. She. And she's. She's. She. Got.
Sure. You're.
And. All of this. Found. So. 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 We have these. Houses. Houses. That.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting. Yeah. It is.
She's.
I don't want. She. So. She's. I think she's.
She's. Thank her.
The information is correct. So. She's.
As much as $50,000 a year that we currently spend on, uh, on water, on, on, to, to the MWRA, for the water supply to, to irrigate that golf course. And I think all of those things going forward, I would like to be a part of if possible and will again work with the community to find the best way to do these things.
Great. Selkman Daly.
Yeah, well, I, I really appreciate your many years of service to the town. And I, I love the water retention idea. That would be a great way to recycle our, our own, the rainwater that we're, I know, trying to deal with so we don't have a wet course anyway. So that would be, that would be a win-win. And the driving range is good. I have to take issue with one thing, though. You mentioned in your, um, statement, you were wanting to explore the possibility of creating a, a dog-only park.
Well...
And I, 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 I'm, I like dogs, but I think our parks are for people and, you know, you fit the dogs in, but I don't, having a dog take over a park is not, um, something I would favor.
I don't, did I, did I really word it that way? I may have.
Dedicated dog park.
Well, I'm on the committee...
That's what, that's what I took it to mean.
I'm, I'm on the subcommittee to explore the possibility of doing that. It's practically impossible. I can tell you that right now. But we are looking at all options at the request of a couple of citizens who came to us, came before us, seeking a subcommittee to explore the options. Believe me, we, we've worked tirelessly to try to find a place. I simply don't see where that is in this town that would suit their needs and, and fall into...
Well, do make sure you let us know when you're having a public hearing on that issue because I would like to come and testify.
Well, I mean, listen, issues around the dog parks and dogs in parks, they draw a crowd always.
Pro and con.
And they're a vociferous crowd, I might add. So, uh, both, and, that's right, pros and cons, they, they go both ways. And dog owners, you know, have one set of priorities and people who are afraid of dogs or don't want dogs in their parks, uh, near their homes, uh, they have a different set of priorities. So, that's another thing about the beauty of this commission, as chaired by John Bain. John always, always gives everyone a chance to be heard. At the end of the day, people may not always agree with our decisions, but they can't deny that they were given a chance to be heard. And I think that that's vitally important.
So Dan, how would a driving range at the golf course work? Are there any, any ideas for where you could accommodate that?
Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, there are a set of plans that have been developed. They're in the, the early stages. Uh, it would go up, I, well, I know you're familiar with where the golf course is. If you know where the Francis Wmet statue is, on the hill above that, heading out toward, uh, the first hole and where the old maintenance shed was. It would probably, it would require obviously netting and, and some tree growth around, uh, the netting to make it, uh, its appearance better. Uh, but it would, it would accommodate up to a, a 270-yard shot. Uh, it would require also that the first hole be reconfigured from a par four to a par five.
No, par five to a par four.
Excuse me?
Hole one to par five.
Hole one is currently a par five.
So it may be made...
The tee would have to be relocated and there are plans for that, uh, making it a par four and a par 70 course versus a par 71. Uh, now, if you look at, if you took conservative figures, there are roughly somewhere around 200 or a little less days of, uh, of the year where you could go out and hit golf balls at a range. If we sold 100 buckets a day at $8 a bucket, uh, the total of that would come to about $160,000. That's, those are very conservative numbers. Um, now, the beauty of having a, a range at a golf course is, is that it would increase the number of rounds because people would go to the range and perhaps play a round. They call constantly looking to see if we have a range. But on a standalone driving range, one of the biggest costs is labor. We wouldn't have that problem because we have the labor there already doing other things.
Right.
So the cost of doing it may, uh, be somewhere north of a half a million dollars and, and no time that could be paid off. And then in the short period of time, you could start, uh, putting that money into other areas of the golf course to increase the playability. Eventually, way down the road, you can increase, you could really redo that clubhouse and almost make it a wedding site. You could, if you could make that a 200-person, easily can be done, 200-person hall, uh, it would be a tremendous source of revenue for the town. And God knows, we need the revenue. And I think that these opportunities do present themselves to the town and I think they're worth looking into.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, questions from other board members?
I, I'm just gonna, uh, offer a footnote to, um, the fact that Dan's been involved in all these design review projects because, um, at Billy Ward, I learned on Saturday, uh, I knew that Mr. Ward was a, um, beloved resident of the neighborhood, but I didn't realize that he was a, a tee conductor on the green line. And one of the, um, play structures there is a, a little replica of green line trolley cars. And I gather that the MBTA is actually willing to give us some decals so that they'll have the right, uh, you know, insignia on them.
Right.
Which I thought was a very nice touch.
I too didn't know that. And John Bain was the one who knew that, who knew Billy Ward very well. I did not. Uh, but he was the one that, that brought that up and, and saw to it during the design review, uh, process that, uh, we could find a way to replicate as a play structure, a trolley. And I'm sure, I wasn't able to go to the grand opening on Saturday, but I'm sure that the kids just loved that one. So, as well as the rock climbing, small rock climbing.
Right. And, and on the technical side, there's a big challenge there because there's a huge drop between the Aspen Wall Street end and the Brook Street end of that, uh, playground, which is a very important, uh, pocket park, so to speak, in a, in a very dense neighborhood. Um, and they worked out a pretty good way of creating a ramp, which I suspect is going to have a few skateboards on it from time to time.
Well...
We shall see.
Uh, you know, we, we can't always prevent skateboarders from going where they want to. There are ways to curb their appetite, but, uh, it's impossible to stop.
Dan?
Uh, I also want to commend you in your years of service. I was impressed over the weekend when I was looking through this list of design review committees that you participated in. I think, uh, all of these parks have turned out quite nicely and I know there have been some tough choices that have had to be made in terms of budget, um, and weighing pros and cons in terms of, uh, what elements we can, we can incorporate. Uh, Selkman DeWitt really led into my question about skateboarding. I know that, uh, that skateboarding has been a contentious issue on the, the Park and Rec Commission over the past couple of years and there have been some attempts to, to cite, um, other skateboard parkers, some skateboard elements within existing parks. Uh, and you highlight, uh, in your future goals that, uh, you want to continue to work on this. I'm curious if you could just speak a little bit about sort of how you think that we can, um, we might be able to, to incorporate skateboard and, uh, skateboard elements in the future and what's maybe some of the impediments have been in the past and how we're gonna overcome those.
Well, there's one large impediment and that is the NIMBY, Not in My Backyard. Noise is, is a factor. I think people really think the noise is probably much worse than it actually is. Um, that's my opinion. Uh, but I, I think that there's a sizable number of skateboarders in the town, perhaps in the neighborhood of 600 or so, uh, kids of all ages. They, it's not just young kids that are skateboarders, people your age, probably a little younger than me. Uh, definitely a little younger than me, I, that, that do skateboard. And, uh, they're, they're, they're a cool group of people, I want to tell you. At our meetings, they've been most respectful, uh, and they run into some severe opposition. And, and sometimes that opposition isn't very, they, they're not very kind in their remarks to the skateboarders. There's always one or two that will cause trouble. But I think that somewhere down the line, uh, the, what, I don't believe we should have a huge regional skate park, but I think that there, we could incorporate into our park designs, especially in parks where there are areas that aren't so close to residences, uh, some elements, uh, to allow the skateboarders a place to go.
Great. Well, thank you, Dan. I'll echo my, uh, thanks and high regard for all the work that you've been putting in for the town for so long. I had a, a surprise inspection the other day up at the Olmstead, uh, Olmstead Park and, uh, boy, I can't wait to see that thing.
I know. I look forward to that. I really look forward to that. I think that's gonna be terrific.
Great.
And thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Good. Uh, our next interviewee is Karen Brezloski, who was a candidate for reappointment to the Building Commission. Karen, thanks for joining us tonight.
Hi.
And why don't you introduce yourself for the record?
Sure.
And tell us about what you've been up to with the Building Commission.
Sure. Um, I'm Karen Brezloski. I have lived in Brookline for, I think, nine years. Uh, I have, I'm an architect and my background is in public work, working for public agencies such as Massport and the T and municipalities around Boston. Um, I have been on the commission for less than a year. It's been a pretty short time so far. Um, but I've been, uh, it's been an interesting short time. I've been on a committee of seven that, uh, made the selection for someone to renovate the Lincoln, old Lincoln School. Um, I'm also listed to be on a couple more that are upcoming, um, committee of sevens. Uh, um, I think it's a great, um, commission. The people have very different backgrounds, but those backgrounds really work together to, to understand the processes with regards to how selections are made or money is spent or, uh, construction issues, things like that. Um, I hope to be able to be a part of, uh, more of the, of the, um, the selections and the involvement on the upcoming school projects, which are very interesting. Um, I have a son who's going into high school in a, uh, year. Uh, he's in eighth grade now, yes, or a year, so, or seventh grade now. Um, so, so I'm very interested in how that, uh, process goes too.
Go ahead, Selkman Daly.
Well, I just want to say Karen was a very helpful member of the Runcle School Building Committee. She was one of the parent, um, uh, members of our committee and it was, it was great to have someone with some expertise in the, in the architecture world, um, join us. Thank you.
Great. Uh, I know in the, um, in the upcoming school projects, there's kind of a new trend that's been developing, uh, and new, uh, two different ways that we can bid and build these projects. One is more of a design-build approach to things. I'm wondering if you're up to speed on the, on the, this, these approaches and if you've got a, uh, an instinct about which approach is gonna be best for us.
Uh, well, there's, there's the design-build approach and there's also the, uh, CM-at-Risk approach, which is being, uh, incorporated. Uh, I do have a background in both of those, um, those, uh, building process types. I've done, I've done both, design-build as well as CM-at-Risk. Um, you know, there's always the pros and cons of each of them. Um, I, I think the CM-at-Risk will, will serve these projects well. Uh, you know, there, there's always, it's, it, it seems like there's, there may be, um, it may be a more inviting process for, for the town. They will be more involved in the process, having the contractor onboard early, uh, giving them information of, on how these projects can proceed in terms of schedule and budget. Um, so, so I think it'll serve these projects well. Um, sometimes the cost is a little bit more to have the CM-at-Risk, uh, but again, I think you, you sort of get more for the, for it. Um...
If the cost is more, is, is that, does that mean that, that we, you can expect less change orders afterwards, though?
Yeah. So, so you're supposed to buy into the, to the cost upfront, meaning that you should have less changes later on. Um, it doesn't quite always work that way, but, but it does tend to, to trend that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that'll make our life easier anyway, as the chief approvers of change orders.
Right, right, right.
I know you, the Building Commission too.
Yeah.
Uh, great. Questions from the board members?
Just, uh, kind of follow up on that, actually. You, you took my question, um, because I'm involved with the Devotion School project.
Right.
And, uh, we have been approved for CM-at-Risk and, um, our thinking on that one, and I'm kind of interested in your thoughts, is that it's very complex, uh, phasing, staging, just staging it is a nightmare without considering phasing. Um, and it seemed at, that there would be a great benefit to having somebody onboard early and sort of invested in helping, um, with the management of the project from the very beginning. What that means in terms of dollars in the end, I, I haven't a clue. But just in terms of overall accountability and, um, I don't know, it seemed to make sense.
Right. I mean, that's what they do, right? That, I mean, they're, they're used to construction and they have to figure out how it's built.
Right.
So that's why it works well for com- uh, complex projects that need a lot of phasing, um, so that things go smoothly and stand scheduled because that's what they do for any project. That, that's their responsibility to do that. So now you've incorporated that information, um, up in the front of the project, um, so that later on, it's gonna go more, uh, smoothly because they've already given you an advice of how that's gonna take place.
Yeah. And presumably there's some interchange dialogue with the designing architects and the CM about these things so that if, for some reason, there's, um, let's say, um, they can, I, together, they can identify places where they can, um, change things a little bit to make it work better. That was actually where we, at least on the committee, were hoping we'd get great benefits because we know this is gonna be one where there's a lot of, uh-oh, problem solving.
Hopefully it's a team event.
Right.
Um, there's always personalities, but you know, hopefully you've got the architect, the contractor and the town.
Right.
As a team, uh, you know, trying to come to the same ending, which is a good ending.
Yeah. And that's actually the, the sort of, the concept that made sense.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. We're not gonna make our appointments tonight, but we will be shortly. And thank you for your service.
Okay.
And for your, uh, great answers to our questions.
Thank you.
And our last interview for tonight is John Gallagher, who is the, uh, candidate for, uh, reappointment to the Information Technology Advisory Committee. I see John there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Gallagher from 167 Rangeley Road. And, uh, I've lived in Brookline since dinosaurs ruled the earth. I went to Runcle School in Baker growing up. My mother went to Devotion. I won't go any further back than that. But, um, my background is the software industry. I, I built and, and sold three different software companies. And, uh, my specialty in that particular area is text-to-speech and voice recognition. And my experience has been working with seniors and people with disabilities, is that, uh, it is extremely important for, uh, seniors who are less than able, perhaps with their fingers and, or who are afraid of technology, uh, as well as people with disabilities who can speak well but don't have good use of their hands, to be able to interact with our website and to be able to interact with our information systems, uh, merely by speaking and getting answers from our, from our database. We have quite a comprehensive IT system. I've been very pleased, uh, in my short tenure in the last year, working, um, uh, working with the people, very good knowledge of budgets. I think they've done a very good job working with what they have and I think we can, I, but I always think we can do better. And, uh, in my experience in the last, uh, year or so, working, uh, with Paul Epstein at the Teen Center, um, and, uh, we're working on a program to try to work with the Teen Center and the Senior Center on an exciting new program, um, I'm even more energized thinking that a large segment of our population can really benefit from this type of technology, which is not particularly expensive. It can be an add-on to our existing systems over a period of time. So I, I think I can be, uh, my, uh, my expertise in that area can be well-used by the IT subcommittee. I also worked with Betsy. Uh, I was on the Community Foundation Board for six years and Treasurer for three. So I've been pretty involved with the town. And as I say, remain involved. If you walk into the Teen Center, you'll see this old beautiful pool table that all the kids flow around on. That came from my house. My wife and I donated that, so... And the kid, even Paul Epstein can't break it.
Great. Uh, board members with questions? Selkman DeWitt.
I, I actually have a couple of different questions for you. The first one, you might or might not have, um, any kind of, um, personal experience with, but we've been hearing from folks who, uh, feel that it would be desirable for there to be what I'm gonna call a user group, kind of, um, uh, citizens who's, who's, who probably use the town's website and use a lot of interactive technology, um, who could give feedback, perhaps through the IT committee, but also to the staff, um, to talk a little bit about, and maybe wishes, we wish there could be, you know, filling in the blanks, whatever they might be. Um, and I know that the whole website is undergoing a massive redesign right now and so, um, in a way, the, the thought I had was, well, let's not introduce anything new right away, but with this new redesign, maybe it would be a good time for there to be a particular, um, group whose, whose role would really be for feedback. We've tried it, um, and presumably people who are sufficiently experienced and knowledgeable that they can say, um, such and such a thing didn't work well, can, can we work out a way to solve this problem? And I just wonder if you have any thoughts or reaction to that idea.
I, I think that would be probably one of the most positive steps you could possibly take in the development of a user interface, um, because the reality is that IT systems fail when they're designed by programmers because they design what they think is cool and what they like as opposed to what the users need. It's the users need to tell the, uh, the IT group, uh, which, they may have some boundaries as to what they can and cannot develop, but as long as the database is there and the structure for the web design interface is there, it's really not a major job to plug in different applications after the fact. So I think a, uh, controlled environment with a, uh, perhaps an odor, what we did with the Senior Center and this other, uh, task that we're working on is we, uh, we developed a questionnaire, um, as to what the users wanted and, uh, we went through that with them. And as a result of that, we developed a prototype for a, for an enabled website. And I think you could, you could take the same approach. I think that would be a very wise thing to do.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely in favor of that.
Okay. That's great. I'm very pleased to hear you say that. And then a different question, and I'm just curious to know whether, and I know that you've been involved with the Teen Center and, um, and other sort of, I would say, satellite projects. Um, has, uh, the access television, is there synergy with IT and access television in any way?
Um, not that I'm aware of. It doesn't mean that there isn't.
Okay.
Uh, I know that the Teen Center and access television are going to be working very closely together because they're, uh, they're, they're trying to utilize that as a, as a way to get their message across.
Right.
To different people within the town who might not necessarily, uh, be aware of it. Uh, for example, if you, if you were able to do a survey of some kind, I bet you'd find that many of the people who watch access television might be in the senior category. And that's a very good way to bond those two groups together.
Right.
And so I think, I've been extremely impressed by Matt Cooney and, uh, and his whole team over there, Paul and everybody. It's just an amazing group of people who have, they let the kids talk about user interface. They let the kids design the Teen Center.
Right.
Basically, they did that from the ground up.
I think they had a little guidance, but yes.
Which was very, very smart with Gwen Austin Ford, whom I know you know very well.
Yeah, right, right.
And others. Um, they've done a terrific job there and, uh, I think, I look forward to them working closely, uh, you know, with that group.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Gallagher? I think I told you once, John, I've got a match to that pool table. If they ever do break it...
You did.
I might be convinced of power.
Well, yeah, they've, they're trying, but they have broken all the queues. And they use the, uh, uh, they use the chalk as projectiles on a regular basis. So we have to continue replenishing that store.
Good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, uh, all you do for the town. Appreciate it. And we got about three minutes before we can call the next matter, so, uh...
Oh, dear.
Anybody heard, any, heard any good jokes lately?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry I missed the announcements, but isn't this the week that the farmer's market is starting?
It certainly is. And I did remind people, but we could have a nice conversation about all the wonderful things they're gonna have.
Yeah.
Um, I, I happen to know that this may be local strawberry week and I shouldn't even be saying it out loud because that's where I'm going.
Wow.
But, um, there's, there's clearly, um, you know, seasonal, new, interesting seasonal things and, um, I looked at the website to see who the providers were and although there are a number of, uh, ones that people will remember from before, there are a couple of new ones, so it's nice to know that there's variety and change. And I think 1:30 on Thursday is the place to be.
Excellent, yeah.
In the Center Street West parking lot.
Excellent. Anybody else?
Well, who was it? We just approved, uh, the liquor license for somebody to...
Cider.
Hard cider.
Hard cider.
Yeah.
And other cider or apple, I guess, apple-based products. Seems like there's apple syrup included.
Hold on one second. I'm getting the official time here.
You think our clock is wrong?
To the world clock. Our clock is definitely wrong. Uh, any questions with the...
I'm going to talk about America's...
We've got two minutes exactly.
Stunning wind against Ghana last night.
How about that?
That was exciting.
That was very exciting. Almost two-tens for me.
Mexico and Brazil drew today, yeah.
Mexico, Brazil, add to a draw today. That was pretty exciting.
Boy, wow.
Because Brazil's supposed to...
Because Brazil's favored for that.
Supposed to run away with it.
The whole thing, yeah. Wow.
And I, I think a sort of side comment here, I don't think it's, I think it's okay to say, our regular tab reporter is not here because he is at the World Cup.
Oh.
Ignacio is a great fan.
Reading for Uruguay, I think.
Uh-huh.
So, they had a tough match, I think it was on Sunday.
Well, I did like the, the guy that's from the US team that scored the winning goal was coming in off the bench, which is apparently...
Right.
Highly unusual.
One of his first international starts or international appearances too, so...
Yeah. Excellent.
Well, if you need to bring a Brookline angle on this soccer conversation, let's, let's go back to the new park at Olmstead.
It's not soccer, it's football, guys.
Yeah, well, it's soccer in Brookline. So let's go back to our, uh, Olmstead Hill Park, which I...
Well, it's, it's, it looks, it looks more like a big sand pile now, so we need it to be transformed.
No, but it's, no, no, but that's, it's starting to look like a, like a soccer field.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, it's really cool to kind of see it coming together. And, um, hopefully we'll be developing, uh, the soccer stars for the future there. And it's very likely, all right. We have now got, uh, about 20 seconds, so I'm actually gonna call the matter.
Okay.
And I'm gonna call, uh, the, uh, application of Chen 2013 Corp, DBA Spice of Brookline for a change in name of their common victual license. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you start by introducing yourself?
Sure. Hi, my name is Rashni. I'm the manager and owner of the Spice of Brookline on 10 O'Nai Beacon Street.
Thank you.
And I'm, is here tonight to request the change of the DBA from Spice of Brookline to giggling rice tied to go.
Good.
Sounds like we should see a new menu for this, no?
Um, menu is going to stay pretty much the same.
Uh-huh.
Except we might just add some more of the native dishes.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
I would like to know, what is giggling rice?
Uh, we are mainly takeout and delivery.
I'm sorry, I thought it was a food, giggling rice, no?
Uh, giggling rice itself?
Well, that's the name you're choosing.
Right.
And I just wondered what it means.
What it means? Well, I kind of put my character into the business. I love to giggle.
Oh, I see. Okay, it's personal. Oh, I see, okay, it's personal.
Rice is kind of represent the type.
It's not a recipe, it's your personal interest. Okay, all right. All right. The personality of the restaurant.
Rice makes you giggle.
Yeah, okay, well, that's fine.
Rice kind of represents the Thai cuisine, so I think I combine those two together.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, well, any other questions from board members? I don't have any objection to changing the name. I appreciate you coming in to tell us, though.
Thank you.
It helps us, actually, because when we drive by it someday and it's got a different name, we know that it is the same.
Yeah, because actually lately, we've been having a lot of mistakes with another restaurant, which is located in Cambridge.
Oh.
And that's the main reason.
I see. You need to be able to differentiate yourself.
Yep, because some customer called here, called us, and they go pick up there.
Oh, dear.
Or they get a call there and come pick up with us, so.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea, so I'll shift.
All right, so I move that we approve the application of Chen 2013 Corp to change their DBA from Spice of Brookline to giggling rice Thai to go. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next, I don't know, Sunset Partners Cantina Grill, Sunset Cantina here, Mark Berkowitz. Why don't we hold that one for a moment? And move forward to Trader Joe's East. Is anybody here for Trader Joe's? Great, come on forward, please. Good evening. If you'd stop by introducing yourself for our record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Brangwin from the office of D. Nicola Seligson in Upton with a business address of 185 Devonshire Street, Suite 902, Boston, Mass. I'm here on behalf of Trader Joe's East, Inc., the licensee, and what we're applying for today is a pretty simple change of officer. There'll be no changes at the location, the management, the premises will remain the same, it's just a change at the highest-up corporate level. Dan Bain was formerly served as COO, Director, and President. Mr. Brian Pallbaum is the new officer. He will be taking over as President. Mr. Bain will remain as COO and Director. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to ask them, but I think we've provided you with the information you need to do a check on Mr. Pallbaum, and we believe he's well-suited for the position.
Good. Any questions?
I do have a technical one, and I'm going to guess maybe it was an error, but under the application form in item 14, when it's citizenship and residency requirements, it's checked that a majority of the directors and managers are Massachusetts residents, and if I look at Attachment A and I look at officers and directors, we've only got two locally-based persons, and the rest of you seem to live in the farthest part of the world in California.
That may be, I believe that there, and I apologize, I realized coming here today that I, after all the work that went into that application, I don't have a copy with me in the file.
Ah, sorry about that.
No, that's my, it's completely my fault. I believe that it was set up, and I believe, without looking at it, that we had made it so that the licensee, Trader Joe's East, Inc., the directors, I believe it's a majority, the application requires a majority of directors, is it?
Well, it says directors and managers, and I've just looked at the list, and there are two people who reside in Massachusetts and five who reside in California. Not that I have any objection to California.
If you look at the titles, though, the ones that have the directors, two out of three of those are Massachusetts.
So, if it's only directors, I suppose it's okay?
Yes, I believe that was how we had set it up, and the ABCC, that's what they require, is the directors. Otherwise, you're right. So, I hope that answers your question.
I think it does.
Good. Well, I have no questions about this. I do appreciate that Trader Joe's is so diligent about keeping their records straight. They've always been right there whenever there's been a change of managers or assistant managers, and this is further evidence of how careful and diligent they've been about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll continue to work with the corporate office to keep Brookline apprised of any changes that happen there.
Thank you. So, I move that we approve the application of Trader Joe's East, Inc., DBA Trader Joe's number 501, and that's their application is for a change in offices from Dane Bain, President, COO, and Director, to Brian Pallbaum, President.
I think it's Dan Bain.
I think it's Dan. I think we have a typo of our own. I think it's Dan and not Dane.
I was going to say, the new president doesn't rhyme as well.
We're wondering who named your child Dane Bain.
The problem was in our agenda there, but to, so now it's going to be Brian Pallbaum as President and Dan Bain as COO, Director. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Now, we have the application of, oh, we can do those two, okay.
Want to do the parking, the off-street?
Yeah, so we'll take Agenda Item Number Nine, which is opening a parking space license renewals, and, is there anybody that present this? This is an annual item.
Do we expect, is this something that Building Department, or who would we normally be hearing from here? I know both Building and the police.
They're saying they've approved.
Have approved.
Police fire, Building have approved. We usually just voted, except these three have to be voted conditionally.
I know.
I would just note that there was a notice from the Building Department that they're trying to keep up with unregistered vehicles, which, you know, are always a problem at these locations, but that they feel that they've resolved them to the point where they could recommend approval of all the renewals. But I would note that there are three that are delinquent in their application, and that we recommend that the board approve those licenses, subject to the filing of appropriate paperwork and a payment of a $50 late fee.
Okay, and I had a question, which clearly, it obviously is not a major problem now, but we did have one applicant who we actually had before us about a year ago, or less than a year ago, I guess, before the last renewals on Bartlett Crescent, that had many, many complaints, and I know that the Building Department and the police both were paying attention to their accurate reporting. This says that they are being permitted five cars, and what I recall was that we had counts of rather more than five cars being parked. So, I guess there's a part of me that wants to hold this until I know that we have, that they are actually compliant, and the number, it's on page two out of 24, at the bottom of the page.
Two out of 24.
Page two out of 24, and it's Bartlett Crescent.
Christine Deb Bakerly, yeah.
Yep.
Well, if you remember, though, there was a certain number of spaces they were renting out to people, but then they were conducting their car repair business and moving cars in and out of the garage, which, as I remember.
Actually, the word we got was they were not really doing repairs. They were saying they were doing repairs, which is part of why I'd like to know whether they are actually compliant. They also had some zip cars that might have not been licensed, zip car spaces that were not licensed.
That's fair enough, and it's not the first time we've talked about this particular licensee as well.
I don't want to single them out, except I would just like to be reassured that they're compliant, so if we can, I would be willing to vote them all and hold this one just pending answering questions.
So, the question is, who's going to do that? Because we've already heard that the police fire, Building Departments have approved the listed locations for renewal, but we're going to ask the Building Department to do
it? Could be more specific and.
Or I'd even be willing to approve them, but ask for someone to let us know for sure that this particular license holder has been compliant. And the question would be, are there unlicensed zip spaces? I actually have photographs of those zip spots. I know they exist, and I know they weren't licensed, so I want to know whether they've corrected those.
Okay. So, we have time to hold this one and put it back on the agenda before June 30th.
Yeah, we could put it in a week, right. It would be fine. I don't have any problem. I just want to be assured that those folks are actually doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? All right. So, I'm going to move that we approve the list of open-air parking license renewals for fiscal year 2015, with the exception of the item, the last item on page nine, seven of our package, two of 24 of the application, and that's the location, at 3 Washington Street, Bartlett Crescent. We're going to hold that one. We're also going to include that the application of Frederick Clayton at 94 Beaconsfield, Rosenstock and Bloomstein at 41 Gorham Avenue, and Victor and Angela Shasha at 397 Washington Street, Rear, approved, subject to the filing of appropriate paperwork and the payment of a $50 late fee, and that all approved licenses are upon the condition that the owner shall keep the parking area in good repair and regularly clean up debris on the property, such as broken concrete and tree branches. That's my motion. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. And now, the only item left is Sunset Cantina, and they're not here, so.
Kate, do you know if they called and asked when they'd be on? Because we were supposed to start this stuff at 8 o'clock, so maybe they, somebody told them.
It's a change of hours, it's only a change of one hour, but it's Sunday morning, and I feel like we need to hear it.
I'd like to hold it until they can appear.
Should we give them 10 minutes? I'm going to take a quick peek out in the hall, okay? Let's make sure that they're not waiting for an invitation.
Well, they probably would notice to come at like 8:20, right? Yeah, that's what I remember, right.
Which is too efficient tonight.
Yeah. This is the most amazing early.
Well, if you can make it the trend, you won't get any complaints from me.
We're just complimenting you, Chairman Goldstein, on your. Right, absolutely. We think every meeting should be like this.
Yes.
Well, it's joke time again. Sports discussion time again.
Well, we can tell you, Ben and I, and Neil as well, were delegates to the Democratic State Convention, which was a model of inefficiency.
I'd like to appoint you the Secretary of the Convention, I think. Tonight's performance is any model you could.
It took two hours for them to complete the roll call of who was there.
Actually, Pat Ward even said he couldn't believe it.
I've never seen it take that long.
And then, the first ballot for all four contested constitutional offices took four and a half hours, I think.
Unbelievable.
So.
We should tell them all about electronic voting. But we will say that Brookline's former selectwoman, Deb Goldberg, came out the highest among the treasurer candidates, although she and the other, the second place, both opted not to go into a runoff ballot. So, she, neither she nor the other guy got the official endorsement, but she did come out the highest.
Very exciting. She gets elected, I'm sure there will be absolutely no benefit to the town of Brooklyn.
No, but it would be.
I always figure it's good for the town.
Yeah, I think it would be really nice to have a Brookline former selectman as the state treasurer.
Good. I can't think of any other topic of conversation, because I was on vacation all week, so.
Yeah, tell us about the US Open.
I wasn't plugged in. It was very cool. It was, the competition part of it was not so exciting, because, you know, Matt Kamer from Germany ended up going ahead on the very first day and opened up a wide margin that nobody even came close to attacking.
Yeah, I mean, where was the competition? Did I read this is the first time a German has won the US Open?
No, it's not the first time. And I can't remember the name of the prior German winner. Anyway, he played some incredible golf, but it was just such a beautiful course, you know, something that our own Lynch Course in Puttaham will someday be, as soon as we put the driving range in and the water retention system. You know, you ever hear about the sand hills of North Carolina? That's where this is, and it's a very interesting geology here. It's like sand dunes that have grown over with, you know, kind of more typical flora that you'd see in a forest or something, and it's well inland. It's very, very far from any oceans.
Yeah, right. It's area that I think the glaciers sort of scraped and left a whole bunch of sand behind.
It had to be the bottom of the ocean in some, you know, at parks.
It's an interesting kind of.
But it's very cool. They've restored this golf course to its original vision, and which involves the original kind of flora and sandy, scrubby approach that was originally there, not just when they built the course, but like I said, millennia, epochs ago. They also have a new approach, which actually, I already spoke to our Parks and Rec Commissioner about, too. The new byword, byphrase for the USGA, the United States Golf Association, who makes recommendations on golf courses, is brown is beautiful. They no longer irrigate these courses from rough to rough, both sides.
Interesting.
And they, and not even, all of the fairways are fully irrigated. They plant a type of grass that stands up well, even when it's brown and not watered, and it's a lot more efficient and a lot more cost-effective, and it looks beautiful at the same time, too. As long as you kind of revise your pre, you know, pre-bias about what a golf course should look like, that it should be, you know, lush and green from one side to the other, so.
My bet is, those first ones in Scotland were even more challenging, if that's the right way to put it.
So, it's now 20 past eight, and, I mean, I think we've given them the time that we can. It was technically calender for 8 o'clock, so unless somebody thinks otherwise, I think we should probably call the matter.
Hold it.
Hold it for our next meeting. And any thoughts on that subject?
I agree.
Should we take one last look outside? Make sure they're not sitting around waiting for invitation? Thank you, Kate.
Kate. I will tell you a funny little anecdote, I suppose. It's not, we don't need to fill time anymore, but I have a son who lives in Washington, DC, and it turns out that he lives across the street from a place that is the home, it is a house that was occupied by the Anderson family of Lars Anderson, and is now the home of the Society of the Cincinnati. And my son went to visit there, and they said, "Oh, you're from Brookline. We know somebody from Brookline," because Brookline resident Archer O'Reilly has been a major member of the Society of Cincinnati, so just to know that the world is very close.
He brags about that, and I had no idea what it was.
You can't hide from Brookline. And it was interesting, I didn't realize that they had a house that had been owned by the Anderson family, or built by the Anderson family, I guess.
Glad we got that anecdote, because in the meantime, our applicant did arrive.
Time filler.
No, 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 we would kill in time, and you got here just in time. So, Mr. Berkowitz, we stop by introducing yourself formally. By the way, I'm calling Agenda Item Seven, which is the application of Sunset Partners, Inc., for a change in liquor license hours.
Mark Berkowitz from Sunset Partners.
Would you explain to us quickly what the change that you're requesting is and why you're requesting?
The change that I requested is to serve alcohol an hour earlier on Sundays, because we would like to start the brunch at 11 o'clock, not at 12:00. So, just to make sure that we're on the right side of law at that time.
And we know that we are allowed to give you an extension on Sunday.
Yes.
Earlier than noon.
Yes.
ABCC's default is noon. ABCC's default is noon, except for Sunday brunch hours.
Exactly.
So.
Good, any questions, comments from board members? See, none?
No, I think brunch is important.
Brunch is the most important meal of Sunday, I think.
Yes.
So, seeing no objection, I am gonna move that we approve the application of Sunset Partners, DBA Sunset Cantina, to change the alcoholic beverage license common victualler hours for an increase on Sunday. So instead of being from 12:00 noon to 1:00 AM, it will be 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all, and this concludes tonight's meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much.
In record speed.
In record speed.